Good evening and welcome to the March 25th, 2020 Regular Meeting of Hamilton City Council. We're here in City Council Chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We are changing things up a little bit for this meeting and possibly for future meetings, depending upon the circumstances that COVID-19 presents to us. I know Governor Dewine today, I think, approved teleconferencing type of meetings, so we're definitely looking towards that and have started the groundwork for that. We're in a different formation up here. It was football, I call it a smart formation, but we are practicing the social distancing. We have one public hearing this evening, involves traditional neighborhood zoning, and our goal with the way we're running this meeting is to protect the health of citizens who are here and, of course, all of us on the city team. So, roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Moller.
Present.
We're going to start off by offering a prayer by Councilmember Nab, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Let us pray. Lord, we are gathered this evening to ensure all residents in businesses in Hamilton. Our city is working diligently, mindful of everyone's safety and well-being, as we plan and strategically look to the future in our support services and responses. We thank our first responders and medical assistance teams for their commitment and work in ensuring safety to those seeking their assistance. We are grateful to all people and all businesses for their countless sacrifices and contributions as we move through these uncharted days. Lord, in closing, we pray for an end to this ordeal, for eradication of COVID-19, for our health and return to traditional levels of daily lives throughout the world. We pray these words in your holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Nab, next on the agenda will be a COVID-19 presentation update by our Health Commissioner Kay Ferrar. Kay?
Thank you, Mayor Moller, members of council and members of the public. I did a very short presentation tonight just to update you on the latest, especially So, I wanted to make sure that everyone knows the correct numbers to call if they have any questions about coronavirus. So, the 800 number is 1-833-4-ASK-O-D-H. That line is staffed by experts in infectious disease and nurses. They're available seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and anyone can call that line. It's really meant for the public to call. The physicians and infectious disease specialists and urgent cares are calling the individual health departments. So, this is truly for the public. Don't be hesitating to call if you need help or questions. That's what they're there for. Our current situational report, this is as of 3:25, 2020, and again, remember, this is such a fluid situation. This is as of 4:00 p.m. Butler County has a total of 20 positive cases. The city of Hamilton, which I'm sure you're all concerned about, has two. So, we got our second case today. The individuals within the city of Hamilton, we have both females, which is kind of unusual. The male population is at much higher numbers. Our females are, one is in their late 50s and one in their late 30s. So, a little bit unusual. They are both hospitalized at the current time. So, total pending tests that are either with O-D-H or those in a private lab that are known to public health are five. And that's a big caution, and I think that's the part that I want to highlight. We don't know all of the private labs at any one time that have specimens that belong to the citizens of Hamilton nor Butler County. So, physicians now are doing testing and sending them in, and it follows the typical, they report when they have a positive. So, it's very hard and very difficult for me to know what's out there until it's a positive. I don't get negative results on those private labs. The Ohio Department of Health announced their case count as of 2:00 p.m. today at I think it's important to note what the change is from the previous 24 hours so you can kind of have an idea of how this is hitting. So, the previous day, it's an increase of 140 count cases. Also, to note, in the Ohio, numbers are 75 ICU admissions. So, there's, it kind of tells you how many are very sick. There are 75 of them that are sick enough to be in the ICU, and Ohio has 10 deaths. So, for the U.S., which updates, and I didn't get this on the slide because they don't update until 4:00 p.m., so in the United States, there are 54,453 cases today. That is a change of 10,270 from the previous day, and in the U.S., there are 737 deaths. So, those are all numbers that we keep very close eye on. Of course, if you look at the overview of the United States, the state with the highest counts are New York. If you look at southwest Ohio, Hamilton County has the most, and Butler County is just the second most in that southwest region. Who needs to be tested? This still continues to be an issue. I'm not going to lie, there are just not enough test kits out there. We don't have them. So, basically, our marching orders from the governor are, if you're not sick, no testing. It's not to be used to screen or rule out whether you've been exposed or anything else, so you just don't get tested. If you have a mild illness, like a cold symptoms that can be managed at home, the thought is to stay home, you don't need to be tested. I want to add one little caveat to that. If you do have a mild illness that includes a temperature of 100.4 and a cough, a dry cough with it, I would really encourage you to isolate yourself or quarantine yourself. And what quarantine means in this day of COVID-19 means, you can live with your family, but you should really try to isolate yourself to one room of the house. So, your meal should be brought to you, and someone should come pick up the tray afterwards. They should be very thorough on washing, and to make sure they wash their hands after they handle anything that you've touched. The preference would also be that you have your own bathroom, but that is what is being recommended if you are mildly ill and able to stay home and assuming you possibly could have a mild case of COVID-19. For severe illness, that would include difficulty breathing, shortness of breath, worsening symptoms that require medical care. The test requires a doctor's order. So, don't call the local health department. You should really call either EMS, an urgent care, or an ED, but you should announce yourself with what symptoms you're coming in for. So, if you are able to transport yourself or to call EMS, you should say what your symptoms are so that people know to arrive with the proper PPE and they're able to handle you properly. We can't say enough that we're trying so hard to protect our emergency responders, our hospitalists. Those are the numbers that have to stay up to the high levels of people able to work or else, you know, we've kind of lost the war. So, we have to keep those individuals well. We're already looking at plans to get retired nurses out of retirement to come and help at least with the nursing homes and some of the other care facilities that are having difficulty with having their workforce being ill themselves. So, that's why those recommendations. A person, once they test positive, are followed up by the local health jurisdiction that is following the case. And what we do is, we do what's called contact tracing. So, we find all the names of the individuals they've had contact with in the last couple of days, and then we quarantine them. So, they're actually under a quarantine order by the local health district to stay home, and it's 14 days after the contact with the positive case. Again, those people then are to stay alone in a room, preferably with their own restroom. They can come outside the house to get fresh air, but they're not to interact with their neighbors, they're not to go to the store. It's only to get a little bit of fresh air, backyard, front porch. It's not meant to be an interactive situation. What did I do? Did a boo-boo or some kind? So, we have had a lot, this brings out the good in people. I truly believe, I've heard more good stories than I have ones that I've been eeked. So, there's a lot of people calling, they want to donate goods, they want to volunteer, they want to do anything that they can. So, the link on this page, you're able to go in and complete a survey for anything that you may think that you have or can do for another. So, they're looking for linking people, and this is headed out of the EOC, so our EOC is standing, that's the Emergency Operations Center. They're hooking volunteers with people who need. That's a very important function that they took off of our plates because I do have individuals calling that are either under quarantine, that can't get out to the grocery store because they live alone, or just elderly people afraid to go to the store. You know, they'll call and ask for a face mask, and I'll say, I'd rather you not go to the store, let me hook you up with a volunteer so that someone else gets your groceries and brings them to you. So, that link is a good link. For the people in need, they should call the EOC's emergency number, 785-5800. So, anyone that has a need, that's a good number to call, and they, again, will hook you up with those that have filled out this survey and said, I have something that I could help you with. The SNS shipment, so that's Strategic National Stockpile Shipment, we received at the EOC shipment number one. That is being distributed as we speak. So, they have formulas, this is what they do, they're used to this kind of thing, and they delineate by numbers of beds. So, the first supplies are going out to hospitals and extended care facilities. They're getting a portion of what they need by number of bed count that they have, and they're being distributed. The second shipment, we expect to arrive about Friday. It too is not going to be enough for everybody, but there'll be formulas that they figure out and dispense however they can. I did have the benefit of finding some stockpiled masks and gowns, goggles. They were supplies that we had left over from H1N1. So, I brought those over to the firehouse on, losing track of time, I think, Tuesday, and dropped those off. Now, those are all what we would call expired goods, but there's new criteria from the CDC that as long as the rubber on the mask is good and et cetera, and there's ways that you could rig it to help you still use it, putting rubber bands on it or et cetera. So, I did turn those over to the firehouse yesterday, so we have a little bit of extra supplies that went out. The best advice that I can give people is just stay home because you could save a life, and I know that's hard for people. I still see pictures of people on beaches in, you know, large numbers. It's just, this isn't, you know, something that we want to encourage done as much as possible, stay home. The city's doing a great job of social distancing, and we hear more positive stories than we do negative by far. I also have a little slide. I sent this all to you on Tuesday, I believe. So, we, out of our funds that we get for preparedness funds, it's a grant through the federal government, which we're part of, it goes to Butler County, and then the city of Hamilton, city of Middletown, both get shares of that. They keep an amount to do the epidemiology portion. So, we have asked Jordan, who's their epidemiologist, to make this report available three times a week. This will be posted to our website. I just think it's a much easier thing for people to look at and understand and have a grasp of where we're at. So, this is old. He will come out with a new one today. I realize today's Wednesday. They've got caught up with, they had a positive case that was a Miami University contact as late as, they found it out today, and so they're scrambling with doing that contact tracing, so that, he was not able to make this, but I will continue to pass it out. We will post it on our website. Brandon's been doing that. But it's a graph that helps you to see kind of the age range, the dates that the cases were and when they were tabulated. Keep in mind, there's always going to be a little bit of a lag because the lab is still taking a while to do some of the tests. The private labs are taking sometimes two days. O-D-H's lab turns them over in about 12. So, if they go to O-D-H, I'm getting them back the very next day. If they go the private lab way, it takes about two days. So, this is just another one of the graphs that start and show you the onset of illness date. This will, again, be updated because the two cases that we have that are new, both date of illness was at this end. You see where there's zeros, those will be filled in. I can't remember the exact date, but... This shows the distribution of sex. So, as you can see, they are predominantly male, even here, 63% male, 37% female. I don't know if we're going to topsy-turvy that because we have a new one that's a female. I don't know what Jenny's is, but that will completely change as we go on. It also shows the distribution by age. As you can see, you know, here, we originally thought this was all 65 and older, but remember, that is for poor outcomes and especially when they have other comorbidities like lung disease, heart disease, diabetes. So, we are seeing more of our young people or middle-aged people having it. And this is confirmed cases with risk categories. So, seven of them definitely were high-risk patients, but nine had either no or unknown risk categories. And then, last but not least, we have the confirmed ones by hospitalization, and that column will change again because it says four are hospitalized, and my new one is hospitalized. So, again, that is just a moving target, and it will just constantly be moving, and I'll update, but I like this report. We all signed off on it, and we'll push that out to council and on the website so people can see it as we get them. Is there any questions for me?
Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Kay, I have a question about travel, and we're seeing a lot of states that are shutting down, Florida beaches and stuff like that, and if you're traveling to see relatives or something from Ohio to Florida, do they recommend that's okay, or they telling you to stay home still? Or, I mean, there's a couple of different things going on with it.
Right.
I mean, if you're staying with relatives that are known okay and stuff like that.
I think that's a big caveat, is what are you going down there for? Who are you staying with?
Right.
You know, definitely, I think flying starts becoming concerning, and you start worrying about getting on an airplane just because of the way the air circulates.
Right.
Driving in an automobile is less worrisome in that regard. I would definitely, at this point in time, not drive down and go to Disney World, you know?
Yeah, it's not, well, I mean, okay, I have an RV, okay? So, and I just read an article about that the other day, RV's the safest way to travel right now because you're staying there.
It is.
And, you know, but are any states, I think other people are asking me the same question, are there any states that are, well, my brother went to, from DC to Nagshead, to his house down there, and North Carolina, he had to have permission to come in.
Yeah.
And, but he was, he was a property owner, even though he wasn't a resident, and they let him in.
There's definitely restrictions going on, and I don't know day-to-day what has changed. So, I would recommend that you check with a place like AAA or one of them and really ask, or call the State Highway Patrol, the general number.
Right.
And ask, you know, I'm going from point A to point B, are there any states that I'm not going to be able to pass through?
Yeah, in my case, right now, we're, you know, we're planning to go down and see family down there, and we have an RV, but there's also, we heard that there's, like, some of the KOAs and stuff like that are closed, but the private resident resorts are open.
Yes.
So, you know, and we are keeping in contact because that changes daily, so...
It does, it does.
So, I just, I want to know if there's any, if there's a restriction in a state, you could drive through it, but it's, and I have a lot of people that are doing that that are going to take off in a RV or something, so that's the safest way, but can we go this way? And I said, not sure yet.
Yeah.
So, but you do need to check.
I would check. I really would before I say that yes.
But you've never heard of any restrictions of doing that, as of right now?
I have not, and I also know that I've heard from State Highway Patrols that they're just not randomly even stopping people. You know, the state of Ohio is now on restricted business. So, my husband carries a paper that says that he is a essential employee because he's passing over into Kentucky, and he doesn't want to get stopped, but I've heard from the State Highway Patrol, they're not randomly stopping someone.
No.
Now, if they had a reason to pull you over, then I guess all bets are off.
Right.
Because they could ask you, what's your business? Why are you on the road? But they're not randomly stopping people to check.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
In response to Vice Mayor's question, I was just going to note that I have seen in some declarations of emergency of certain cities, them restricting interstate travel in those declarations, and so, you know, if someone knows they're going to a particular city, they may want to check with whether or not that city has declared an emergency and whether or not that declaration restricts interstate travel.
Yeah, and I, that's what we've been doing, it's kind of, you know, we're supposed to go down in a couple weeks, so, you know, we're looking at that, but keep it in touch with everybody. Thanks, appreciate that.
Couple quick questions. Well, first off, the Butler County General Health District data, that's an excellent presentation.
Yes.
Easy to understand, easy to read, very, very informative. How many total U.S. positive are there right now?
U.S. is 54,453.
And 710 deaths?
And that's as of 4:00 p.m.
So, 10% being, well, how about the 10% being hospitalized in Ohio, is that...
That is about typical.
Is that higher, or is that about the way it is?
That's about typical of what we're seeing.
10% of hospitalization of positive cases?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that says, in ICU.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Thank you, Kay, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. Thank you.
That brings us to audience of citizens, and for this meeting, we only have an audience of citizens. If you've got a specific agenda item, we ask that you be concise when you do speak. Just looking after everybody else's health, safety, and time. We have one person who signed the book, it's Mr. Connor. I believe you're on the agenda tonight for a first reading of the Gilmore issue.
Correct, yes. Good evening. I first want to thank members of the city council, as well as everybody in this room, to make this meeting possible during these very challenging times. My name is Evan Connor, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my business, Freeman Auto Auction, located on North Gilmore Road. It's agenda item number seven. Since Freeman Auto Auction's entirely planned and proposed by me, I'm prepared to answer any and all questions you may have.
Any questions from Mr. Connor? This is the first reading. There is no vote this evening, it's just a first reading. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
And just stay tuned for other notices of how we're going to handle our future meetings and our future audience of citizens. We've got the consent agenda, they were in our package, all those particular listed items and COX reports. There is no committee to hold this evening due to the way we are handling this agenda. I'll accept the motion involving the COX agenda and the four reports.
No move.
Second.
There's been a motion that council receive those reports of the consent agenda and concur in their recommendations. Motion made by Councilmember Brown, stated by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the public hearing section of this meeting, and I'll accept the motion to regular meeting be recessed in the following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. It is 6:26. We now go to the public hearing. Please read it in the record, please, Mr. Grubbs.
A public hearing regarding amending certain sections of zoning ordinance number 7503, Sections 1131.200 TN-1, Traditional Neighborhood 1, District 1131.300 TN-2, Traditional Neighborhood 2, District 1131.400 TN-3, Traditional Neighborhood 3, District, and 1131.500 TN-4, Traditional Neighborhood 4, City of Hamilton applicants.
Mr. Grubbs, has anybody signed the public hearing book?
No one has signed the book to speak.
Is there anyone outside, those chairs outside that were put up?
There was no one outside the chambers.
Okay. Just for the record, anyone in the audience who should be heard at this public hearing involving traditional neighborhood zoning? Anyone in the audience who should be heard at this public hearing involving traditional neighborhood zoning? Anyone on council who should be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, stated by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. 6:27. I'll accept the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Roll call vote to go back into the regular meeting, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion that, the motion that the note would meet upon amendment, each member of council was furnished with a printed copy of the legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We have received all of the reports involving the pending legislation that we're going into right now. Agenda item number three, the second reading of an ordinance involving the conveyance of property on Washington Street here in Hamilton.
An ordinance proving the conveyance of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area, acquired through the land bank to Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton Incorporated, NHS 320, 326, and 330, Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, stated by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion about this particular ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Go to agenda item number four, second reading of ordinance involving conveyance of real property, 1101 Lane Street here in Hamilton.
An ordinance proving the conveyance of certain real property located within the city of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area, acquired through the land bank to Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton Incorporated, NHS 1101 Lane Street.
Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion or questions or comments about this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
which is second reading of an ordinance involving conveyance of real property, 320 Main Street to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton.
An ordinance for the conveyance of city-owned real property, 320 Main Street to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, submitted by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any questions or comments about this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Thank you. We now go to new legislation. Agenda item number six, frustrating ordinance involving traditional neighborhood zoning.
An ordinance amending certain sections of zoning ordinance number 7503, Sections 1131.200 TN-1, Traditional Neighborhood 1, District 113031.300 TN-2, Traditional Neighborhood 2, District 1131.400 TN-3, Traditional Neighborhood 3, District, and 1131.500 TN-4, Traditional Neighborhood 4, City of Hamilton applicants.
Thank you. The frustrating ordinance, which we had a public hearing on just a few minutes ago. Go to agenda item number seven. First reading of an ordinance involving conditional use dealer-to-dealer automobile auction sale business on Gilmore Road, North Gilmore Road.
An ordinance approving a request for conditional use certificate to operate a dealer-to-dealer automobile auction-sales business at 8340 North Gilmore Road and a variance to the paving requirement allowing the rear portion of the property to remain a gravelled lot, property zoned I-2 Industrial Zoning District situated in the 6th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number eight, frustrating ordinance involving the gas cost recovery rate.
An ordinance amending subparagraph 947.12B of Chapter 947, gas service of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to the gas cost recovery rate as it pertains to the definition of base gas costs only and repealing said portion of subparagraph 947.12B as it currently exists.
Thank you. And that was a first reading. Be voted on later. Agenda item number nine, first reading of an ordinance involving conveyance and adjoining property on Central Avenue.
An ordinance proving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 531 Central Avenue.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, frustrating ordinance involving conveyance of property, adjoining property, 1141 Lane Street.
An ordinance proving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 1141 Lane Street.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11, touring ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, submitted by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion, excuse me. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Second reading of the ordinance now, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, submitted by Councilmember Ryan. Now, any questions, discussion, or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
And item number 12 is touring with emergency ordinance involving the sale of property of 632 High Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing directing[1422.33]